Good evening. We call to order tonight's regularly scheduled City Council meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council, August 24th, 2021. Please join us for a moment of silence. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you to everyone who came out this evening. We've got a pretty full agenda tonight, a lot of important topics to talk about. The first item is council comments. City manager comments.
None tonight.
Okay. The next item is matters to be presented by the public. These are non-agenda items, and we'll grab our sign-in sheet. No one signed up for non-agenda items? Okay, we'll move on through. The next item is the adoption of the agenda.
I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. All right. Item one, update on capital improvements of the Bristol, Virginia Public Schools. Staff report. Dr. Perrigan.
Mr. Mayor, I'm taking my mask off so you can understand me better. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Reed, everyone else, thank you very much for letting me share with you tonight. You know, it's almost, I've almost been with the school division for five years. I was tasked, when I was hired, to help our city find a way to build a new elementary school to replace the old and aging and crumbling schools that we have in our city. And I think we may be closer tonight than we have been in the last four and a half years. So I'm excited to share some of that information with you. All right. So I guess I can summarize for you without having slides there for you, but we have been, as you know, for four and a half years, looking at ways to build a new elementary school to replace. At one point, we were looking at replacing Washington Lee Elementary, Highland View Elementary, and Stonewall Jackson Elementary. That changed its plan some. We had settled, our school board had voted to build a new elementary school at Van Pelt. City council had also approved the comprehensive agreement with the opportunity to review the financing plan that came. And as you'll remember, we put that on hold because we thought there might be some new financing plans available, and that there might be even some new properties that come available, and some other folks who might be interested in investing. So we did put that project on hold for about a year, and we started talking about it again, and started looking at some properties that were more central. Mr. Reed, what am I doing wrong? There we go. That were more centrally located in the city. As you know, the original plan would have put one school on the eastern side of the city, or actually, one intermediate school and one primary school, and no other school serving. So we did start to look at some other options in the center of the city with the new hope that we could potentially use ESER funds to help offset some of the costs. The U.S. Department of Education does discourage the use of ESER funds for new construction because there is a 2024 deadline for us to be able to spend it. So in order to get a new construction project approved, it really had to meet some very stringent scenarios. So the first option that we looked at, there we go, all right, was the original Van Pelt option. The only change to that option would be that we would keep Stonewall Jackson open. We would use some of our ESER funds and an energy performance contract to do some much needed renovations to that building. The way that we could get this approved through ESER is we have, ESER funds allows us to, or encourages us to deal with learning laws. And by having a centrally located school where we could house a summer camp program and an after-school program, and have bigger sized classrooms for social distancing, it would meet the criteria for using ESER funds for that purpose. The other option, we actually looked at two different options. Call those 2A and 2B at Washington Lee. That was, the first option was looking at the current property. As you know, Washington Lee is built right into a hillside. There's not a lot of flat space there to build a school. But this option would allow us to use ESER funds to grade off part of that hill and to temporarily bring in a modular unit, because ESER will allow you to put a trailer on your property, but won't really allow you to put a new school. However, that would allow us to pay for the grading, bring a modular unit in, and then you could use that, the new flat grade work to build a new school later on. However, before we got too far into that, we did hire geological engineers to come in and do a survey of that property. You'll remember that we had some sinkholes that appeared on that property about a year ago, maybe a little over a year. And after they did the survey, we found out there were more sinkholes on that property. And actually, the entire playground behind Washington Lee at one time was a big sinkhole that had been filled just to make that playground. So you could build on that property, but because we would have to build a three-story building to make it work there, the amount of additional work to the land to make it suitable for building was really astronomical. So we had to mark that one off the list. The next option that we looked at at Washington Lee was to purchase adjoining properties. There have been a couple of those properties that have been for sale over the last 18 months. You probably are aware of the price of those. We did look at one additional property, but because of current real estate market, if you're familiar with that at all, houses and homes and property are selling for much more than they have in recent years. And so in order to purchase an adjacent property, that also prices out of being able to use the Washington Lee property. So again, we had to mark that centralized property off of the list. There was another property in the center of the city that, for just a few minutes, maybe a few days actually, was possibly going to go on the market for sale. And so we began looking very closely at that property. It was actually a very, very ideal property to build a school and maybe do some other things for the city. However, that property's availability was very short-lived, and at this point, it is still not on the market, and there's nothing else going on with that property as well. So even though we think that would be a great property to consider, that property is also not available, so we had to mark that off of the list. Which brings us back right to the very beginning, where we started, and that is at Van Pelt. And so we, as you know, Van Pelt, we are talking about building a primary school, I'm sorry, turning the current building into a primary school, so we would serve grades K, pre-K, K and 1. And then the new school that we build would serve students in grades 2 through 5. We would use, those classroom sizes would be larger. One of the problems that we're having currently at Highland View, for example, we have a kindergarten class of 36 students, and we have 18 in each class. And even though we can fit those kids in those classes, we can't socially distance those kids in those classes because the way they built classroom sizes in the 30s and 40s were much smaller than the way that we build classroom sizes now. And so even though we are having in-person learning for our students, we're having a hard time spacing them appropriately in order to be able to prevent quarantines. And so this school would do that. It would help us to provide ample social distancing, and it would also help us have a centralized place to do our summer and our after-school academies to deal with learning laws. One of the other options that we could do with this is, you know, one of the things that's popped up during COVID is the need for childcare. There is a severe shortage of childcare opportunities in the city of Bristol. Our board has approved a childcare training program that we're going to start offering second semester at Virginia High School. That'll train our students to either get a certification in childcare, give them a head start in going to the community college to get additional certifications, or even potentially lead those students into the teaching profession. And right now, even though we have it approved and we have a place to teach the class, we really don't have a place for those students to get hands-on experiences. So one option, if we do follow through with the Van Pelt plan, is we can do renovations to the top floor of Washington Lee, because it is handicap accessible, and just close off the bottom two floors and use that as a training center for a daycare, for a daycare class. Or obviously, we could sell Washington Lee and Highland View and use the proceeds from that sale to go towards the cost of the school as well. As you probably know, we do have a drawing, a rendering of what the new school would look like if we built it at Van Pelt. We have, the architects have already drawn 40% of the plans, and so that is really the reason that, as far as I know, other than adding on to existing schools, this has been the only school, new school construction project that has been approved in the Commonwealth of Virginia by the Virginia Department of Education. And that's because we're basically ready to put shovels in the ground. We, in order to provide a guaranteed maximum price, the architects do have to get the plans up to 80%, but they're very close to that, and they think that they can do it in a very timely manner. In order for us to use the $2 million that I'm going to share with you more about here in just a minute, we are on a very tight deadline and would need to make a decision quickly so that we could start moving dirt at the beginning of 2022. And so we have asked JA Street to provide new estimated cost for construction. I'm sure you're all aware that with COVID, there has been a sharp increase in the cost of building. Their estimate back in 2018, that we were looking at about $18 million to build the new school at Van Pelt. However, today, because of inflation and the rising cost of construction materials, they estimate that to be just north of $22 million. Again, that is an estimated cost. The good news is, because of the great work by this council and by the CFO and the city manager here, Bristol's bond rating has significantly improved. Interest rates are historically low. And because of that, if you'll remember, when we were first talking about building the school, the cost was going to be about $1.2 million for a 30-year lease. However, because of the city's improved bond rating and because of historically low interest rates, the current estimated annual payment for a 25-year lease is $1.3 million. Now, I will just keep in mind that the increased cost for construction is a rough estimate from JA Street, and this annual payment for a 25-year lease is also a rough estimate from the financiers. So, that leads us to the now what. First of all, you know, our school board did temporarily put the comprehensive agreement on hold. So the first thing that has to occur for this to move forward is for our school board to reactivate the plan. And we've done that. The next thing that we thought would be very important to make this project more feasible to not only the city council, but to the citizens of our city, is to bring some money to the table and to get VDOE approval for, to use ESER funds for new construction. Well, we're here to tell you tonight that we have $2 million approved, conditionally approved, from the Department of Education. The next thing that we need to do is to update our savings calculation. If you'll remember, by closing three elementary schools, we would generate enough savings to make the annual payment of the new school. The reason that was is because we would have all of our elementary-age students on one campus. We wouldn't have class sizes of 12 at this school and 24 at this school. So however, by keeping Stonewall Jackson open, that does provide the benefit that we have an elementary school on the western side of the city, but it does not generate the same amount of savings as we would if we were closing down all three schools. We still do not, we do not have an accurate count of our enrollment. We still have students enrolling and transferring to other divisions. It looks like that our enrollment is going to hold steady, especially at our elementary school. We've seen our kindergarten classes grow in over the last couple of years. But as soon as we have a firm count on our enrollment, we will provide a savings calculation to City Council as well. The next step will be for us to obtain an updated financing plan and a guaranteed maximum price. If you will remember, part of the comprehensive agreement is JA Street has to tell us the absolute maximum it will cost us to build an elementary school. If it goes above that, we still get it for that guaranteed maximum price. If the price comes in below that, we keep 55% of whatever's left, and JA Street would keep 45%. And we also have to have a new financing plan. And then obviously, the last thing that our school board has to do is to recommend City Council action. And so for the City Council, your responsibility is this. If you'll remember, when City Council approved the comprehensive agreement, there was a condition that the city's financial advisors would look for additional financing options that may or may not be better than what we could provide through the triple net lease that was available to us through the PPA process. And so that will, my recommendation to City Council, and I've spoken with city manager about maybe scheduling some preliminary meetings to begin discussing this, is to go ahead and have the city's financial advisor to begin working on this, because we are going to be on a very tight deadline in order to get this project done on time, in order to access the $2 million that's going to be available in federal funds. There is the risk that we have associated with asking Street to give us the guaranteed maximum price, is that there is an abandonment of project fee if we start that process, and then when it comes to a final vote from City Council, that we could have to pay up to $100,000 additionally. If you'll remember, when we put the, after consulting with the city manager about some potential opportunities last year, we did put it on hold. Actually, the abandonment of project fee was $250,000. When we made that decision to put the project on hold in good faith, we went ahead and paid Street and the architects $150,000 for the work they had done up to that point. So there's still $100,000 remaining. Street believes they can get it in below that, but obviously, I'm not asking for a vote, but I would be asking if City Council, if we do move forward with getting this guaranteed maximum price, that City Council consider helping if you do vote against the project, helping offset the cost of that, up to $100,000. And then finally, I would also say a potential City Council responsibility for this project is you can use your ARP of funds towards this project as well. Every dollar that we put on the front end brings that annual payment down. So that, again, that's not my decision to make, but it's certainly a responsibility that the city could take on if they so chose. Finally, I just wanted to share with you a little bit, we have really, I mean, COVID has been terrible for so many reasons, but it has really been beneficial to our school system in a lot of ways. As you know, with the $1 million that City Council gave us from your original CARES Act funding, and the other $15 million that we've received in gear, ESER 2 and ESER 3 funding, we've been able to knock a lot of capital projects off our list. And as you know, capital projects are the responsibility of the local governing body. There's not state funds for that, there's not federal funds for that. And so every project that we've been able to knock off of our capital improvement list is, every dollar that we've spent there is a dollar that we don't have to come and ask City Council for. And I won't read all those projects to you there, but as you can see, it's a pretty exhaustive list. We have replaced windows that needed to be done, we've improved air quality in our schools, we're building outdoor classrooms so that we can get our kids outside and don't have to worry about potential quarantines. We're replacing roofs and chillers, AC systems, heating systems. It has been, I mean, we have really made a big dent. One of the projects that's going to be very, very beneficial to us is replacing auditorium seats, because we, by replacing those auditorium seats at the middle and high school, it will also give us larger classroom space so that we can social distance. And those projects are just shy of $500,000. And they're on our capital improvement list for the city to help us with over the next couple of years, but because we've been able to use our ESER funds, all of these projects have either have already been knocked off the list or be knocked off that list very soon. So we are spending every ESER dollar that we have as wisely and as fiduciarily responsibly as we can. So that gets us to the end. You know, there's no secret that the city of Bristol has been scraping, counting, and pinching every single penny that they could get their hands on for a very long time. $2 million is a lot of pennies. Mr. Hartley and I were talking about it today. Actually, he did the math, and you could probably do it very quickly too, that is about 200 million pennies. That's a lot of pennies to count. But the pennies I think that are really important are the pennies that affect our citizens. In order for this city to generate the $2 million that we have access to through ESER, we would have to raise our property tax rates by 17 and 1/4%. Now, Mr. Reed, I know will probably check me on that, but that's, if I'm wrong, I'll correct it, but that's my calculation of what it would cost in property taxes to raise $2 million. 17 and 1/4 pennies per $100. So currently, you know that our property tax rate is $112 per 100. We would have to raise property taxes to $127 per 100 in order to make, to generate $2 million of revenue to apply towards a new school. So my request, and I'm not asking for a vote, but I am asking for your support and happy to answer any questions, is that we don't pass up this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to take $2 million and apply it towards an infrastructure issue that we know our city needs. Our city has lots of infrastructure needs, but we have $2 million that we can throw towards this one that we know we don't only need now, but we've needed for a long time. So I ask you, with all due respect, please don't kick this $2 million can down the road. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
We appreciate you coming. We appreciate all the information. Is there any questions from the rest of council?
I have a couple. So, so thank you for your presentation, obviously. You know, before I ask you a question, I'll say this, obviously, that the decision for a location on the school is the ultimate decision of the school board, and it's on us to look at the financing options and how is it fiscally responsible to do it, and how does it fit into our budget and the money that we send to you? But I'm going to ask some questions about the location, because I think that's what a lot of people are interested in, so. So I know you talked about why you can't do it at Washington Lee, because of the sinkhole issues, and maybe it's not stable. So remind me again, I know that to begin building a school per Virginia Department of Education guidelines, you have to have four acres plus one acre for every 100 students, right?
Yes, sir.
So you'd need about eight acres?
Yes, eight acres if we were building a 400-student school.
Yeah. So if you were to, I've heard a lot of people talk about building it at Highland View. If you were to build a 400-student school at Highland View, would you have room there?
Well, currently, our enrollment between Highland View and Washington Lee, which would be the two schools that we close, our enrollment is just under 450 students. And so first of all, we would need eight and a half acres, but you know, who's counting? And the other thing is, that property was marked off the list very early on because of the way the hillside goes down to the softball fields. That's what makes up that entire property. And because of the hillside and the amount of grade work that would have to be done, that, even before sinkholes are considered, that property would be cost prohibitive because of the grade work.
Okay. And you had mentioned a certain centrally located piece of land that may have come available, but did not come available. Have you heard anything about it becoming available in the future?
No.
You don't believe it will?
I'm sure at some, every piece of property in the city will probably become available at some point, but when it becomes available, who knows?
Which leads me to my next question, so.
Can I just add one other thing to that? It's not going to come available for us to be able to leverage ESER funds towards it.
That's what my next question is about. So getting into the financing, so you would have a, to complete the project, you said 2024 is the deadline. Does it have to be fully completed by the end of 2024?
What the Department of Ed is looking for, number one, guaranteed, you have to have the check written by 2024. For the city, Mr. Reed will tell you, he has to have his plan done by 2024, doesn't have to write the last check till 2026. We have to write the last check by 2024, so that's for sure. What the Department of Ed is looking for is, they can only approve these projects if they are to prevent, prepare for, or respond to COVID-19. And in order to meet that criteria, we can't open the school after 2024, we would have to have it open before 2024. And based on the current timeframe that we're looking at, we would like to move dirt in January, 18 months to build the school, so we would open it up for the 2023, 2024 school year.
Okay. So what would the, what do you anticipate the timeline for coming back to us for a vote would be?
So we would hope to do that in December. At the latest, so that we could begin working in January.
That's all the questions I've got.
Street believes that they can get the architectural work done, the guaranteed maximum price, and the financing plan done by December. If we had it done by November, obviously, we would bring it to council for approval then.
Okay, but you wouldn't start, regardless, you wouldn't start construction until January?
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's no way to, I mean, we're going to be, we're going to have to work very quickly, which is why I recommend that we go ahead and engage the city's financial advisors to see if there is a better financing option, because we're going to have to work very quick to hit the January deadline for moving dirt.
Thank you.
I'll just add, you actually asked some of my questions. One of them was, is it a realistic timeline? Because I know how things kind of move slower once you get in those processes, and do we need to complete that by 2024? I'll just make a couple of comments. I think, thank you for all the work that you've done on this. I think that you have really looked at all the properties that are available. I know I've got a lot of comments from people who are asking about, could it be in a more central location? And I think that you really tried to look at that and to put it in there and exhausted those areas, or tried to make it be in one of those areas. There's no doubt we need to do something with our schools. I know the condition that many of them are in, and it's important also, as we grow, our city grows, and we have all the new economic development coming, that we have great schools in place, because that's one of the first things, as people start to move to our area and look at it, they want to know what kind of school system you have and what your schools look like. And I know the school doesn't make the teachers, we got awesome teachers. That's one thing we know. But also, it's important that we have that, that good foundation of a school. I think prices are also going to continue to go up. If we look at it, even extending it down the road, the price for this is going to continue to go up, and I would hate to see us lose out on $2 million. While it's a small dent in this project, it still, it still is a lot when your finances look like our cities has looked in the past, and as we're still working to make those look better. So I just wanted to say those comments, so thank you.
Yeah. Just to that point, Ms. Nave, one of the teachers I was speaking to today, who was almost in tears at the end of the day because of the struggle of trying to keep kids separated in those smaller classrooms. When I left Highland View today, her great teacher, her response to me was, please, please, please get this new school approved. So you're right, we do have great teachers. Our kids deserve better facilities, but so do our staff. The other thing that I will tell you, that it was, it has been no easy task to get this $2 million approved. I mean, it has taken more work than I can even begin to tell you. So not only is the $2 million important, but it has, we've gone to great lengths, our school board has, to get it approved in the first place. So, but thank you for recognizing that.
Councilman Osborne and Ms. Nave, I think, kind of some of the same questions I had. I've got a little, take it a little different tact here. And I know, you know, there's no question that you can use the funds for Stonewall Jackson. And I think I'd asked you this before, because at one point you came and you said that, you know, there's about $2 million, and we would have to put some money in that as well. Is that still the case, or will, I mean, how much, and I'm very grateful that the ESER funds have helped there, but how much local funds will be needed to complete that work?
So we have contracted with a company to do an energy performance contract, and we will actually have those exact numbers probably close to November and December, about the time this decision is going to be made. Based on our preliminary results, we were going to, if you'll remember, we asked City Council for 500,490, whatever it was. But that was, the project that we could either come to City Council and ask for that money for, or to mark off the list, our pre-K at Stonewall Jackson is not connected money for, or to mark off the list, our pre-K at Stonewall Jackson is not connected to our cafeteria. So in order for our pre-K students to get to the cafeteria, they have to go up a flight of stairs, down a hall, and then back down a flight of stairs to get to a cafeteria that's really just a few yards away from them, if it's raining. And so that, the $500,000 would be to put a breezeway of sorts from that pre-K room to the cafeteria. Although it would be very beneficial, and especially for our students who are, need the handicap accessibility, it would be beneficial. But that is certainly a project that we could postpone if we needed to.
Well, and I guess that was leading to my next question. If it was still around that $500,000 mark, I know there's, I think it's up to 200,000 you, you budget, or, or, you know, if the funds are available at the end of the year, you set aside in your capital fund rather than reverting back to the general fund, would there be enough money in the next couple of years in that, since you, you went through a lot of things that you were probably anticipating using those for in the next three, four, even five years? You've, you've really been making some progress. So would that help towards Stonewall?
So keep in mind, when we put the new school project on hold at Van Pelt, we were also doing in-house renovations to the existing building at Van Pelt. And we were using those carryover funds that you're mentioning to take care of those projects. Once, once the decision is made to get this new school project, we still have classroom renovations where we have the open model classrooms at Van Pelt. So I would, I would hesitantly say probably not. However, you do make a good point. We've knocked a lot of capital projects off, so there may be some money to shift around from future requests to city council to handle that as well.
Well, and I guess my whole point for these questions, try to get a better understanding, because, you know, I think, you know, to, to be able to do some renovations to Stonewall is something. I know that the last time this came up about the new school, as, as Councilman Osborne mentioned, you know, the, one of the big things was, of course, the financing side of it. But, but the location, which is, is more of a school board issue, but a lot of people, especially on the West End, I think, had a very good point to make about traveling all the way across town, so keeping this school open. And that's where we started looking at, at options for a, a central location as well. So it sounds like at least some of those will be able to be addressed. I guess I'm trying to figure out, and, and that's regardless, you can do that right now, regardless.
We are, yes, sir.
So I'm trying to figure out if, if we need to be thinking about, as we budget over the next couple of years, how, you know, as you spend that out. You know, and I'll just say, you know, I, I do appreciate the work that you've done trying to look at an option in the center of the city. I know you've looked at a lot of things, and, you know, it's not, it's, there's been a lot of work and looking at a lot of things. You know, as, as this comes back, we'll look at it and look at the numbers. I mean, really, that's kind of to see where we're at. Towards the end of the year, there's a lot of variables right now. The last couple of years have been, you know, a lot of ups, a lot of downs. But I, I do think, you know, with that amount of money potentially go to project, we, we need to consider it and see where we're at. And really, the, the work you're talking about doing is, is what we need. We need a firm number to base any kind of decision on. I mean, these estimates can kind of give us a sense, is it feasible? But before we can vote on anything, we need a very firm number.
Yeah, one other thing that I would add that you, you did bring to mind too, actually, Ms. Nave, when she was talking about our city growing, keep in mind that this design is for 600 students. By keeping Stonewall Jackson open, we really aren't going to be putting 600 students in that new school. And so there's, there'll actually be two options that we can do there. We can build it to the 600-student capacity, which gives us room for growth, as we're talking about new housing projects coming into the city. But the other thing too, and again, this would not be my recommendation, but it would certainly be something we could consider, is the way that this design is, is you could just take classrooms off of the end and reduce the cost of construction. I don't recommend that, but that, that is two options that we could do, since we aren't sending 600 new students to that property.
Yeah, one thing I just thought of, you were just talking about the part of Stonewall was for pre-K. And I think right now, if, if, am I correct, that all of the pre-K is, that they moved them out of the different schools and kind of centrally located them all this year?
We, we do not have pre-K at Washington Lee or Highland View. We're doing pre-K at Stonewall Jackson and Van Pelt.
Okay, so, well, I was wondering if, if, when you got to this model, would it make more sense to have all the pre-K at one location or the other? But that's, that's a question y'all had to figure out.
Just going back, there's that, that U-shaped design of the building, as you could see. If we, if we did get to the point that we needed to shave off money, we could take classrooms off the end. I don't recommend that. But it, the design is, you can either take off on the end or you can add on to the end. So it does, it does have options.
Well, we appreciate you coming in, and I just wanted to say, I know we've been talking a lot about elementary schools, but it's a blessing that those funds were available to cross some things off of our capital improvement list. I know a lot of those things were done at the middle school and the high school. Just if you had a quick, and you all started talking about it a little bit, what are a couple of the next big projects coming up, say, at the middle school and high school that are still on our list to do, that we just need to be mindful of, that they're, that they're coming?
Well, you know, by not, the roofing and HVAC product, projects and the auditorium seating, seating, those are really the, the major projects that are on the next two, three, or four years. We also, you know, in, at Virginia High, which was built in the 50s, they actually had the original transformers in the basement there. We are actually, over fall break, we're going to replace those, which, you know, we've got several years out of those. I won't, I won't do that math and get it wrong, but we are replacing those. So that was a hu, a huge project that we were able to knock off. Anytime that you can do roofs, or HVAC, or chillers, those type of things. So we're really putting a big dent into our windows, I mean, we're replacing windows and doors, a lot of things that we would have had to come to city council for. So really, the bigger projects that I think you would have to be mindful about, we're knocking them off.
That's great. If there's no other questions, we appreciate you coming.
All right, thank you very much.
And we did have an item on our agenda for public comment. No one signed up for public comment on this item. The next item on our agenda is item two, approval of banking services for the city of Bristol. And we have our city treasurer, Ms. Britt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council and staff. I am here today to ask for approval from council for a new depository for our city funds. Four years ago, in August of 2017, the city entered into a five-year contract with Home Trust Bank. All of our banking accounts, except Clear Creek Golf Course, was moved to Home Trust Bank, and that was for logistics of daily deposits. Back in July, on the 21st, I received a notice from Home Trust that the office, the only office of Home Trust Bank in Bristol was closing. So the closest bank to deposit at Home Trust would be about a 20-mile drive, one way. I would like to acknowledge Vicki Warren, the city's procurement specialist, for her contributions to the committee and for publishing the request for banking services. She was also the city's point of contact for all inquiries and receiving the proposals. Here with us this evening are First Bank and Trust representatives, David Crockett and Lance Blaylock. Thank you all for coming. And now I'm just going to read straight from the agenda for the benefit of the public who did not have our agenda item summary. The process began with a request proposal for banking services. The request for proposals was placed on the city's website and EVA, Eva, on July 8th, 2021, and closed on July 30th, 2021, at 2:00 p.m. Two, responses were received as follows, First Bank and Trust Company and New Peoples Bank. The respondents were evaluated by a committee consisting of myself, the city manager, the CFO, and the school board CFO. The committee interviewed both respondents and evaluated the banks based on the evaluation criteria listed in the RFP that was published online. The committee recommends that council approve First Bank and Trust Company for the city's banking services. Do you have questions?
Any questions from council?
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you, obviously, to our procurement specialists, but also to you for your work on this.
It's my pleasure.
And we, we talked about it a little bit. A lot of work goes into it, and a lot of research, so, so thank you for what you've done.
I did have one question. You mentioned, and I understand why, that Clear Creek, is it a different institution? Will that still be at that different institution, or will it be covered by this?
Currently, we plan to keep Clear Creek intact the way it is for logistics, for the staff, and they, their deposit process.
Okay.
We appreciate your update and your work on this, too. The next item was public comment, and no one signed up for public comment on this item. What's the?
Council?
Yes?
You need to make a motion to accept.
We're going to do that next, after public comment.
Okay, sorry.
And Mr. Pollard, I know you came in late and didn't get to use a sign-in sheet, so if you have a public comment, you're welcome to come up to the podium and do that now.
I really appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Mayor. My name is Michael Pollard. I live at 104, 140 Ashley Drive. And I have a simple question for the treasurer, and that is, there were two applicants, and I was wondering why she selected the one that she did. Thank you.
Published in the RFP is the criteria that the committee used to, for evaluation. The committee selected First Bank and Trust based on the overall package that they were able to offer. It best met the needs of the city at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, looking for a motion from council.
I move to accept the recommendation for First Bank and Trust for banking services for the city.
There's a motion from Mr. Osborne, a second from Mr. Hartley. Is there any other council discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnham?
Yes. The next item on our agenda is the Planning Commission Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2020, 2021, staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The Code of Virginia requires that the Locality's Planning Commission submit annually a report of its activities to the governing body. The following, which I have attached in the packet, shall satisfy this requirement. Just to kind of summarize briefly, there are seven members on the Bristol-Virginia Planning Commission. They are appointed by the city council for a four-year term, and they can serve two terms. This past year, there were seven regularly scheduled planning commission meetings held, and one called meeting. Just a quick summary of what was discussed, things that were required action. There were 16 agenda items that required action. Of those 16, there were three subdivision variance requests, two special use permit requests. There are also multiple subdivision ordinance revisions and zoning ordinance revisions. This summary is for information only, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has anything on that.
Okay, thank you very much. And I also wanted to say thank you for your work on the Planning Commission, because many of us know that you're, assumed that position pretty recently, and we appreciate your work coming in and hitting the ground running with that.
Thank you.
And nobody signed up for any public comment for this item. The, the next item is item four, request for a parking variance for Crossroads Medical Mission at 433 Scott Street. Staff report.
Yes, again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Crossroads Medical Mission, who provides free-of-charge primary and urgent medical services to uninsured individuals and others with challenges to accessing care. It's in the process of acquiring property loaded, located at 433 Scott Street, so just right across the street here from City Hall, and I've got the aerial photograph of that up for you to look at. The property is zone B1, which does allow a medical office by right. However, it's been determined that the required number of off-street parking spaces that the city code requires cannot be met. According to Section 50-382, a medical clinic must provide five spaces per doctor and one additional space per employee. Currently, there are only four parking spaces available on the site, and there is really no opportunity to add more. As a result, Crossroads is asking that the city council grant a variance from Section 50-582. So just to summarize, the authority the city council has here, basically that a variance from the strict application of the section so as to relieve such difficulties or hardships, such, some of these difficulties or hardships can be exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of a specific piece of property, or by reason of exceptional topographic conditions. The relief may be granted without substant, if the relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, adjacent properties, and without impairing the intent and purpose of the off-street parking requirement. Crossroads has provided a letter to the city, which is part of your packet, and the executive director, Ms. Cindy Rocket, is also here, in case there are any additional questions that I can't answer. Basically, the clinic operates on a part-time schedule, never has more than two doctors working at a given time, with only a small support staff. Many of their patients will arrive on foot or by public transit, and their patients are scheduled for their visits, allowing for a small and spread-out flow of traffic. Crossroads would encourage staff and patients to park in the gravel public parking lot on Lee Street, or use the on-street parking located on Lee Street for shorter office visits. So after review of the request, staff believes that granting the parking variance is consistent with the requirements of Section 50-582(c). It would not negatively impact adjacent properties. The lot is small, it's only .1 acres, and the current building accounts for the majority of the lot coverage, making expansion of the existing property to add parking impossible. Also, the B2 district, which requires no off-street parking, is located just across the street on Scott Street. And you could kind of look at the 433 Scott Street property as, you know, being part of the downtown area anyway, even though it is zoned differently. I can take any questions, or if Ms. Rocket would like to speak? We could hear from her, too, but that's, that's up to her.
Hi, Mayor, council member, staff. Thank you so much. You all have been such a support of Crossroads Medical Mission in the past, and we're so grateful for that. And we see this opportunity to move downtown as really exciting, because we're going to be right in the thick of the folks that we serve most frequently. So we'd be delighted if you were to grant this parking variance. And for those of you that are familiar with the fact that the majority of our medical services are provided by a 43-foot freightliner bus, we are not planning on parking that at this property. And we will plan to leave that at State Street United Methodist Church, and have a lot of our administrative activities remain at State Street United Methodist Church. So we think we won't be a burden, we think we'll be more of a blessing, and we, we hope that you'll approve this. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
We appreciate you coming tonight. Are there any questions from the council?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you in general for, for all the work you do. And I've heard of a lot of people who get a lot of help from you, and, and I know that we regularly give you funding, and it's one of the things we enjoy, funding, so.
Yes, you do.
So thank you for what you do.
I appreciate it. Thank you for, for your support as well.
I have a comment and a question. I'm going to make a comment first, along the same lines. It's very exciting that you have a physical place and not the mobile outreach. it's very exciting that you have a physical place and not the mobile outreach bus span, I don't know what you call that, I guess it's a bus, but, you know, I know you do a lot of good in the community, so...
Thank you.
My question is for Mr. Dietrich, is, is this like a special exception, that it goes with the, just their use of the property, that at some point down the road, this variance would...
I believe it is just for this specific use, but I'm not sure if, if Randy has any, if you have any...
I would say it's just for this specific entity at this point.
Okay.
Good.
And I'll just add, I was going to ask you about the mobile medical clinic, because I see that bus often at State Street United Methodist, but, and you answered that question, so I just wanted to say also thank you for all the work that you all do.
Thank you.
I know you help a lot of people that otherwise wouldn't receive that care, or would not receive the medication that they need.
Thank you, it's true, what you say is true. And what we're hoping to do is all of the upfitting of the building itself to make it a good medical office, we're hoping to have our grand opening on what will be awfully close to our 20th anniversary, so we've been providing services for just shy of 20 years, and we hope to tie that in to our grand opening of this when everything falls in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody signed up for public comment for this item, what's the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval.
Second.
Actually, can I, can I amend my motion?
Yes.
So can I move to approve it specifically for Crossroads Medical Mission, but any future businesses would have to come back for second approval?
I think we can let the record reflect that.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Osborne, a second from Ms. Naev, is there any other counsel Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnham?
Yes. The next item, item five, resolution to change the name of Industrial Development Authority, the IDA, to Economic Development Authority, the EDA, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, today I'm going to present to you a resolution to change the name of the...
You good?
Would I just put it back on? Both of you on?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
Today I'm going to present to you a resolution to...
We're good.
All right, now we're good?
We're good.
All right, good, okay. To change the name of the Industrial Development Authority to the Economic Development Authority, the seven-member board voted to present to you all for your approval, so today we are going to ask for your approval on that.
Nobody signed up for public comment on this item, the next part is reading of the resolution.
Resolution to amend section 22-277 of the Bristol Code to change the name of the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Bristol, Virginia, to the Economic Development Authority of the City of Bristol, Virginia. Whereas the City of Bristol, Virginia Industrial Development Authority is the primary organization responsible for economic and industrial development within the City of Bristol, Virginia, including the development of publicly-owned industrial parks and a variety of financing mechanisms to assist in the location or expansion of industry within the city. And whereas the IDA is composed of a seven-member board of directors appointed at large by the City of Bristol, Virginia City Council for four-year terms, and whereas Industrial Development Authority for the City of Bristol, Virginia by resolution dated August 9, 2021, requested that this city council adopt an ordinance amending the name of the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Bristol, Virginia to the Economic Development Authority of the City of Bristol, Virginia, and whereas the purpose of amending the name is to indicate that the authority promotes a wide range of economic development activities for the city in addition to promoting manufacturing and industrial development, and whereas all the terms and conditions related to the ordinance is adopted by the city council related to the authority shall remain in full force and effect except as requested to amend herein. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council for the City of Bristol, Virginia, that the city manager shall properly set and notice a public hearing before this council for input on the purpose name change contained herein, and to adopt an ordinance amending the name change of the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Bristol, Virginia, to the Economic Development Authority of the City of Bristol, Virginia, adopted this 24th day of August, 2021.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of counsel?
I move that we adopt the resolution.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second, is there any counsel discussion?
Yes, what is the reasoning for the name change?
The reasoning is just to show that we are open to more than just industrial development, that we're promoting all economic development.
What's the, can you run through the benefits of, of doing this name change, other than just that generally we're promoting economic development instead of just industrial activities?
Overall, there, there's not a lot of difference going into it, other than we are promoting the, the name of economic development, we're going to assume all responsibilities of the IDA, there's not a lot of change going into the processes.
So I've, I've done some, some poking around on the internet, I know some localities are classified as economic development authorities, and, and some localities close to here, like Russell County, and I believe they're industrial development authorities, is that right?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Are, are there some localities around here that are, that are still industrial development authorities, like Russell County?
Yes, sir.
But, but then some, some across the country are calling themselves economic development authorities?
Yeah.
But they have the same, same duties and same tasks they carry out?
Really the same duties. The way I see it is where we're growing, we're wanting to promote more tourism and everything coming into the area, so that, that's why I moved to approve the name change.
Couple questions, what was the, the resolution from the Industrial Development Authority? What was the vote on that?
It was 7-0.
This is unanimous, okay. And then I guess question for Mr. Reed, this has, we don't have to change anything, or has no effect on any agreements, bond documents, things like that, that they've already entered into?
I have reached, anything that's already been entered into, the EDA would still be as responsible as they are now, as an IDA. I have reached out to bond council previously, they do not have any concerns about changing the name from an IDA to an EDA, but there, there would have to be a notice posted that the IDA has changed its name to an EDA.
Well, I mean, to me, it, it seems more inclusive, it seems more reflective of the work they do, I know at one point, we had an Industrial Development Authority and the Economic Development Committee, and that committee's gone away, you know, so, and most of the localities seem to be moving in that direction, if they haven't already, so I see no reason not to support this.
I'll just also add to that, I work with a lot of communities across the region, and have noticed there are others that are EDAs versus an IDA, and that have either switched to that, or, or originally were called that, EDA versus IDA.
My question is, as far as the, the pros and cons of the timing, is, does it matter that we're, that we're doing it now, are there any benefits now versus later?
Yeah, the, there is a debt payment coming up November 1st, that we need to be cognizant of in regards to the falls, so I'll just say that, you know, that's something that we need to think about, at least here in the near short term.
If there's no other further discussion, we have a motion and a second, clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
No.
Wingard?
No.
Farnham?
No. The next item on the agenda is item six, supplemental appropriation of $706,563, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council, this is a supplemental appropriation of $706,563, and the details will be shown on the screen. This consists of city attorney, unexpended fiscal year 21 funds of $58,906, information technology funds, fiscal year 21 encumbered items due to parts shortage, $10,704, police department, unexpended fiscal year 21 donations, $11,748, fire department, fiscal year 21 insurance proceeds for damaged PPE, $40,721, fire department grants, fire department, fire programs, aid to localities, grant carryover of $47,930, fire department grants, four-for-life carryover of $3,279, city sheriff and jail, fiscal year 21 insurance proceeds for vehicle damage, $19,629, city sheriff and jail, fiscal year 21 inmate holiday pack revenue carryover of $4,351, city sheriff and jail grants, fiscal year 21 dare program carryover of $4,695, animal control, fiscal year 21 unexpended donations of $330, hazardous materials emergency, fiscal year 21 unexpended funds of $34,033, street and engineering divisions, fiscal year 21 stormwater unexpended funds of $25,323, Clear Creek Golf Course, fiscal year 21 carryover of $67,799, and then Economic Development, fiscal year 21 unexpended Commonwealth Opportunity Funds of $300,000, those are specific to American Merchant, for total fiscal year 21 carryover of $629,000, $629,448. Additional items are JASP program, Drug Court Sustainability State Grant of $28,928, fire department grants, additional fiscal year 22 grant revenue of $8,187, and VDOT reimbursed maintenance, fiscal year 22 insurance proceeds of $10,000, for total general fund supplemental appropriations of $676,563, transit fund, electronic fare boxes, which will include a $1,200 local carryover, the remainder of that is federal and state money of $30,000, for the grand total supplemental appropriation recommended for tonight is $706,563, and staff does recommend that council approve the appropriation as listed.
Nobody signed up for public comment on this item, is, what's the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval of the supplemental appropriation as presented.
We have a motion and a second, is there any counsel discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnham?
Yes. The next item, item seven, presentation of fiscal year 21 annual financial update, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council, this is the finance update for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 21, data as of June 30, 2021. This data is prepared on a cash basis, revenues the city received, and expenditures the city paid, this is unaudited data. The general fund summary with a budget of $56 million, revenues of $58,103% of budget, expenditures of $50.6 million, 90% of budget, for a fund surplus of $7.4 million, we're going to discuss that in a little bit more detail on the next slide. Solid waste disposal fund summary with a budget of $5.8 million, revenues of, revenues of $5.89 million, 101% of budget, expenditures of $5.149 million, or 89% of budget for a fund surplus of $742,588. Capital projects fund with a budget of $10 million, revenues of approximately $1.55 million, 15% of budget, expenditures of $1.2 million, or 13% of budget, for a balance there of $282,000, and that's made up of the timing of revenue receivables for that fund. Transit fund with a budget of $477,000, revenues of 345, I'm sorry, $346,048, expenditures of $364,197, for a small fund deficit made up of federal and state revenue receivables there. In this slide, we'll provide a little more explanation of the general fund year-end surplus, once again with revenues of $58 million, expenditures of $50.6 million, the cash basis financial statement balance is a $7.4 million surplus, a very large number. Of this surplus, there were beginning balance revenues of $2,451,381. We had a large fiscal year 20 state revenue that was received in fiscal year 21, of $463,972. The carryover, and I have listed there an estimate, because that number may change, but as of tonight, that is $629,448, and in June of 2021, council committed $1 million to the debt service reserve budget, so that reduces that $7 million surplus down to a cash basis surplus of $2,876,252. And here's the general fund revenue summary of the $58 million received by the general fund, $38.8 million is from local sources, $15.56 million is from state sources, $3.3 million is from federal sources, and $271,692 is from other financing sources, and that is related to the fall debt refinancing we did last year. This is what our general fund revenue looks like, what monies the general fund has received, the blue is our local revenue, is it 67% of fund revenues received, and it is 65% of the revenue budget. The state is in, is in red at 27%, and it is 28% of general fund revenues. And our federal revenue is in green at 6%, it is 6% of general fund revenue budget, other financing sources, the purple, you can just barely see that, is less than 1% of the budget. So the revenue composition at June 30, 2021, is right in line with the revenue budget for fiscal year 21. The general fund revenue report, general property taxes finished the year at 104% of budget, other local taxes at 117%, we'll discuss this in a little more detail at a later slide. Permits and privilege fees finished the year at 82%, and this is related to building permits and inspection fees, with a budget of $125,000, which finished the year down significantly at about 80%, and we do believe this was a COVID-19 impact. Fines and forfeitures is at 73%, and this is related to the court fines line item, it has a budget of $200,000, and finished the year at about 73% for the line item, and this is also tied to COVID-19 as well. Revenue from money and property is at 99%, charges for services at 97%, miscellaneous revenue is at 88%. This budget variance is related to the sale of land and buildings with a line item budget of $150,000, unfortunately, it finished the year with zero at revenue, and we also believe that that was tied to COVID-19, that negative impact here, and the city continues to have various properties for sale. Recovered costs is at 75... Recovered costs is at 75%. The largest driver of that is from fuel from outside agencies, which was down significantly. This is offset by an expenditure. So the revenue is down, but the expenditure was down as well. State revenue is at 98%. Federal revenue is at 94%, down just slightly due to the timing of some of our grant expenditures and those reimbursements. Other financing sources is at 101%. Once again, that is related to the fall bond refinance. Now, moving on to financial data graphs. Fiscal year 17 is shown in orange. Fiscal year 18 is in gray. Fiscal year 19 is in yellow. Fiscal year 20 is in red. And fiscal year 21 is shown in green. Local sales and use tax, you can see here is up from all periods presented. COVID-19 apparently did not have the impact here that we projected originally on the local sales tax collections. So good performance there. Consumer utility taxes are holding steady. Cigarette taxes are down slightly across all periods presented, but once again, just slightly. Lodging taxes are down from fiscal year 19 and down from fiscal year 20, but they are up compared to fiscal year 17 and fiscal year 18. Meals taxes are down from fiscal, from 2019, but are up from all other years presented. So the city is clearly seeing some recovery in the meals and lodging tax revenue items related to COVID-19. This is what our sales tax revenue with a budget of $3.3 million looks like as it is received by the city. The blue is the three-year average and the orange is the current year data. Sales tax runs two months behind, meaning that revenues received in June were for the month of April. And this is the city's meals tax with a budget of $4.29 million as it is received by the city. Meals tax is the largest of the general fund's other local taxes. June collections here for the month of May. This graph also shows the effect COVID-19 had on the revenue source. But we began to see recovery in March, still below where we would have been, where we would have been in fiscal year 20 with no COVID-19, but recovery nonetheless. This is what our lodging tax with a budget of $1.34 million looks like as it's received by the city. June collections here are for the month of May. And this graph clearly shows the impact of COVID-19 on lodging tax with potential recovery beginning in March. And we're going to continue to monitor these revenue items as we progress and, and live day-to-day with COVID-19. The target revenue report, the previous graphs show actual-to-actual comparison. This report shows fiscal year 21 budget-to-actual comparison. Total positive variances of $1,885,464, driven primarily by the positive sales and meals tax variances. So you can see, hopefully you can see, I know those numbers are a little small, but hopefully you can see, sales and use tax with a positive budget variance of $781,000. Consumer utility tax, a slight positive budget variance. Taxes on records has a positive budget variance of $43,000. Cigarette taxes, a slight negative budget variance there of about $12,000. Lodging taxes, a negative budget variance of $67,000 for the year. Restaurant meal taxes, positive budget variance of $1,161,000. So that is significant for the city of Bristol. Electric consumption tax has a slight positive budget variance. Missions tax, a slight, slight positive budget variance there as well. Communications tax has a negative budget variance of $40,819. And we reduced this budget again. We reduced it for fiscal year 21. We reduced it again for fiscal year 22, to be more in line with what the actuals were looking like at the time of budget development. So our other local taxes during a year of global pandemic had a overall very good performance. Moving on to the general fund expenditure summary. Government administration finished the year at 91% of budget. Judicial administration, 90%. Public safety, 90%. Public works, 89%. Health, welfare and social services, 92%. Education, 100%, meaning that 100% of the local monies were transferred to the schools for their use. Parks, recreation and cultural, 88%. Community development, 71%. That was driven down by some vacancies in that area and as well as some grant monies that were not expended. Non-departmental, 72%. Debt, 81%. And that is because the $1 million that we budget to expend there wasn't actually expended. It was committed by council instead. The transfers at 97%. So total general fund expenditures for the year were at 90%. It's just important to note that the department budgets were reduced in fiscal year 21 for COVID-19. And departments did an amazing job operating within their reduced budgets for the year. This is what our general fund expenditures look like, how the city's money is spent. The data on the left is actual expenditures and the data on the right is budgeted expenditures. I'm going to read the actual expenditures, the percentages as we go down through there. Just important to note, as you compare where we finished the year actual to the budget is right in line with our budget composition. So actual general fund expenditures, public safety at 28%. Health, welfare and social services, 17%. Education, 13%. Public works, 10%. Debt, 8.84%. Government administration, 5.9%. Transfers, 4.79%. Parks, recreation and cultural, 4.77%. Judicial administration, 3.48%. Community development, 1.75%. And non-departmental, 1.14%. And this data shows that at the end of fiscal year 21, the city's budget structure held. How we said we were going to spend our, spend our money is how we spent the city's money. So even operating during the global pandemic. Transitioning to solid waste, revenues of $5.89 million, 101% of budget. Expenditures of $5.1 million, 89% of budget for a fund surplus of $742,588. Once again, these are not audited numbers, but rather cash basis figures. Disposal revenue finished the year at 112%. Above budget, but still down from previous years. Collection revenue finished at 91%. This is down slightly just due to the timing of the last month's receipt. We didn't quite get that to the bank in June, so it hit early July. That's why that's down. Non-operating revenue at 109%. Due to approximately $20,000 in interest earnings for this fund. And I would like to add that fiscal year 21 is the first year that this fund has recorded interest that I'm aware of. So that's significant for our solid waste disposal fund. Disposal expenditures at 95% of budget. Collection expenditures at 69% of budget, which looks very low. This variance is due to the timing of lease payments. The items were received in fiscal year 21, but for one item, no payments were actually made in the fiscal year just due to the timing of the payments due. And for the other item, only one of the two budgeted payments were, was due during the year. Fuel expenditures were down for the budget for the year at about 65%. And there were other departmental operational savings there. Debt expenditures at 96% due to a positive, due to a positive budget variance in the debt service costs. Once again, keep in mind, debt for this fund is 36% of the, of the expenditure budget. We normally give a quarterly update on falls phases two and three. Budgeted revenues for two and three, you can see totaled $743,000. The year-to-date revenues were actually $864,758, or 116% of budget. That's positive news. Debt allocated for the falls, phases two and three is $2.3 million and was paid in full. The revenue sharing payment was at 59%. So that is good news for the city. And the budgeted deficit is 1.9 million. And the deficit for the year actually was a little over 1.6 million. And here is the information for the city's upcoming debt schedule. I've been asked by members of the finance committee to present this information quarterly so that decision-makers and the public see this information regularly. This is citywide general obligation bonded debt backed by the full faith and credit of the city of Bristol. What you can see in the first two columns is that the citywide bond payments will increase to over $7.5 million through fiscal year 28. And you can see the shortfall related to that increase. Then detailed out is the final refinance savings and how that will be used in the current budget cycle. So this gives us a net payment of which a portion of the $1 million previously annually budgeted for reserves will be used at this point to pay the debt. Then as the revenue sharing payment expires, these monies are going to be used toward the debt escalation. The unexpended debt service reserve funds that council committed in June of 2019, 2020, and finally, 2021 totaling $3 million will also be used to offset the escalating payments. Differences from prior presentations that council has seen are, one, we're going to use the entire $21,882 in solid waste disposal fund investments this year, rather than spreading just a small piece over to the next year, we're just going to use that all this year. Two, we did not pull any monies out of the committed reserve funds for fiscal '22. We just absorbed that $16,463 within the budget. And three, the committed reserve funds column totals $3 million instead of $2 million based on council's June addition to this reserve. So that's a lot of numbers and a lot of words. What does this really mean? It means that the city has a written plan for its escalating debt service that gets the city into fiscal year '28 to, to accommodate the rising debt payments. So this is the city's written plan. I'm sorry, gets us into fiscal year '27 with '28 listed there. The cash balance for the city of Bristol. The operating cash balance at June 30th, 2021 was $23,622.7. I keep saying the thousands wrong, sorry. One year ago, the cash balance for the operating fund was $19.2 million. Two years, two years ago, that cash balance was $19.9 million. Three years ago, $14.2 million. Currently in reserves, the city has 1.4 million in a general type reserve, $3 million in a debt service reserve, and a small piece, $21,882 for solid waste prior debt savings, which once again will be used this year to offset debt payments. You can see the TAN information listed here. And as a reminder, the city has not used the short-term borrowing since the fall of 2016. But you can see not too long ago, the use was significant back in fiscal year '14, $7.6 million. So just a little more detail on that operating balance of $23.6 million. Once you back out line or accrual that we have identified, $596,342. Closure accrual of $346,510. That drops that total operating cash down to $22,679,914. Once again, the investment accounts are listed there as well. This graph shows the city's cash balance at month end. The red line is the current year. The gray line is fiscal year '20. The orange line is fiscal year '19. And the blue line is fiscal year '18. You can see the trend here. Keep in mind, this is the balance at month end. It does vary during the month, but you can see the curve here. Also, you can see at the very beginning of that blue line in July 2017, which began fiscal year '18, that it was below $5 million. Then finally, council, four-year progress. This slide details the progress the city has made in the last four years. The progress has been achieved through fiscal discipline and adherence to financial policies, even during a global pandemic, even when it didn't look like we were going to be able to do that, we were able to do that. The information on the left is from fiscal year 2017. And the information on the right is from fiscal year 21. You can see the operating cash balance has gone from $7.4 million to $23.6 million. The draw on the TAN has gone from 1.7 million to zero. Funds in reserve has gone from zero to $4.5 million. The unassigned fund balance has gone from $8.3 million to the 2020 audit of $17.5 million. The fiscal year 21 audit will not be finalized until around December of this year. Interest earned in our general fund in 2017 was zero. That was because a minimum balance could not be maintained. Interest earned general fund this year, $153,245. That's actually down slightly from last year due to the interest rates falling due to COVID-19. Principal paid on our general obligation debt in fiscal year 2017 was $190,000. The principal paid during this fiscal year was $1,860,000. And finally, there have been credit rating increases. Moody's in 2017 was BAA2. And I believe when I began, the outlook was negative. Two Moody's are now, we're now at two credit rating increases later at A3. S&amp;P has gone from A to A+ and also listed as stable. So council, this concludes the presentation of the financial data as of June 30th, 2021. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Ms. Bradlin. And were there any, any questions or any comments from the council?
No questions. I will say, you know, the audience applauded. It's well-earned and deserved. I mean, that, that four-year progress slide really sums up the change in, in the forecast, you know. 2017, we were in the midst of a thunderstorm. And now in 2021, we see the light, you know, and the sun's coming out. So, so, you know, we still have a long way to go, obviously, with our, with our debt payments and with the deficit running at the falls. But, you know, goodness gracious, you know, we've, we've turned things around and, and things look a lot better than they have. And, and that's, that's because of the hard work of the CFO and, you know, our financial team and, and the finance committee. And I just, we appreciate it. Appreciate it a lot.
Yeah, I'd just say thank you very much for that slide. I think that, that tells a great story. A lot of hard work to, to make that progress of those four years. You know, but, and things are, you know, I was sitting here thinking when you was talking about the, the way we ended last year. And we started that budget and, and where you were getting ready to make a budget presentation, then COVID hit. And then in May, sixteen months later, we see, you know, it ended up a lot better, I think, than anyone would have anticipated. Part of that is we got lucky. I mean, I'm not going to discount that. But a lot of it is due to the fact that, that the staff, Ms. Bradlin, Mr. Reed's made very conservative estimates as to where they thought the revenues would be during COVID. And some of those, like sales and meals tax were, proved to be much better. But also, as you pointed out, even with reduced budgets, all the, the staff and the department heads really kept things in line in, in what was a very difficult year. And so I greatly appreciate that, the work that all, all the city staff has done to, to come up with this report.
I just, just wanted to add, I appreciate everything. I'm, I'm very optimistic about the future. And one of the, there's a lot of different numbers, a lot of different categories. But the one I'm, I'm most excited about, I think, is the lodging tax. It was around 1.3 million. And, you know, when this budget was developed last year, it was right at the beginning of COVID. And we didn't really know, you know, what that would be like. It was a time when people were being told to not travel and stay home. So we've seen those numbers recover, especially over the past few months. And I think that means that people are getting out and traveling, and they're traveling to Bristol. So we've got a lot to show off here in the city, but also the whole region. So I'm, I'm just excited and optimistic about where we're going in the future. So thank you. I had a note on my agenda here about a motion and a second and a vote, but there's no accepting the financial presentation, right? Okay. The next item is the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the council?
I think we would need to vote on items one through three. I think we would need to vote on items one through three separately and then item four on its own. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve items one through three on the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. A motion to accept items one, two, and three of the consent agenda and a second. If there's any council discussion? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naif?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnham?
Yes.
And now I'll make a motion to approve item four, which is the approval of the minutes from August 10th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naif?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Upstaying.
Farnham?
Yes.
If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.